Okay, I think we're ready for the public hearing to amend a special permit for the flexible subdivision for 183-201 and 201.5 Newt Street. And I've just been speaking briefly with Rob Jeva before the hearing began. I understand that you've made significant changes to the plan, to the site plan, since the sidewalk yesterday. So since our consultants and the planner hasn't had a chance to actually look any of these changes over, we'd be happy to look at what you have to present, but we're not going to be able to actually make any sort of determinations tonight. And we'll look for comments from our consultants and from the planner and continue to another date. Just wanted to set the ground rules. We've given it a half an hour?
Yeah, I think we'll probably.
Probably beat that.
I hope so. My record's going to be quick. I'll try to be brief.
Well, if you could, if you could actually limit what you say to like fifteen minutes or less, then that would give us a chance to ask questions.
Yeah.
If you introduce yourself.
I will.
Okay.
I'm Rob Jeva from Metro West Engineering, hiding behind the boards Paul Maui Landscape Architect. The applicant and the owner of these properties is Eric Brooks and Mira Malani from my offices is here as well. And just to refresh your memory, this was originally a three lot flexible subdivision plan that we created, I guess about five, six years ago now. One of the lots is sold off and Mr. Brooks resides in this property at 183 Newt Street. And he recently bought the original property, who was the original subdivision, Leo Lu and Penny Noice who resided at 201 Newt Street. So Eric and Andrea now own the entire parcel. And when the original flex subdivision went through, we had two lots that were serviced off, kind of the existing driveway that served 201, but also served this lot which is constructed and built. And the driveway for Mr. Brooks came in off of a private way, which also goes on Newt Street. This private way serves three other homes. And now that Mr. Brooks has acquired both properties, his desire is to realign this driveway, to remove this segment of the driveway and access his property through the other driveway on Newt Street. And so there's basically two components to this request for modification. One is to slide the driveway entrance on Newt Street.
Could you move to the side, please?
I would if I could stand.
Thank you.
Is to slightly move the driveway over about thirty to forty feet, which is purely a safety issue, improves the site distance looking to the north by well over a hundred feet. And if you come out this driveway right now, there's a utility pole right there and a tree that really do want the site distance looking in northern direction. So this minor change greatly improves the safety and it doesn't involve taking down any, any trees. It'd be a slight stone wall alteration, but they reuse the stone wall and closing the gap where the existing driveway would be, and that would be landscaped.
There's a fire hydrant there, too.
I assume they're not moving the fire hydrant?
No.
The only thing I would note here is that it's a scenic road.
It is a scenic road.
So we're going to need to do a permit on the stone wall cut edge, too.
And I think we had a good sidewalk the other day with, I think, four or five planning board members were there and a couple of the neighbors were there, so we had some pretty good input. And we had the new alignment state and we all walked that. And, you know, it became evident during the sidewalk, there were some concerns about this section of the driveway in particular, where it was coming by the above this property and making the turn in terms of essentially the number of trees that were being removed. So we heard that loud and clear and went back and scrambled today, which is why we're just bringing the plans in tonight, to have a chance to give you any ahead of this meeting. The end still waiting. What I'm going to do in a second is pass out a more detailed sheet for you, but this is the alignment that we walked Tuesday. And what we've done is we brought the driveway down about forty feet to the west, which avoids a great number of trees that were of concern. So, and it's, this is essentially a section of that plan that if you looked at it, I go one for each of you.
One tree.
Well, we can take.
Saving these trees.
Saving these trees.
We're so light. Shifting it as we've shown, we originally threw this section of the driveway, we're taking down twelve mature trees, most of them white minds, a couple of hemlocks came there. Shifting it over into here, reduced it to five trees and two of them are white ash that are in decline. In fact, one of them's basically completely dead and the other one's pretty well on its way out. And the other three are relatively small hemlocks. So, and by realigning it, too, the other thing that happens is I know there was a concern about possibly the headlights coming in and shining towards this property. The realignment will really improve the headlight issues as well. So I think we've tackled that issue in a pretty, you know, progressive manner.
This is much better. Do you have a plan that shows where these adjacent houses are?
Yes. So that's really the house, if we're present tonight, Mrs. Ragavin. We had that concern about headlights coming in that way. So we're now, I don't have scale, we're level, we're like only a hundred and fifty feet away, huh?
So it actually should be less than the current driveway? Because it looks like.
It is.
It's right towards.
It is quite a bit less than the existing driveway that comes by their house.
So what width are you showing?
Well, I, I also heard there was concern about the width, which this driveway is at fourteen feet, so I've actually narrowed this section of this driveway down to twelve feet. So it's two feet narrower than the existing driveway.
Another thing that we talked about on the sidewalk is dealing with the.
I'd like to let Paul discuss the landscape concept for what's going on and the driveway that's coming up.
Okay. We also made some changes from our original plan in that area, between that area as well. We originally were proposing just a turf section that would be maintained on a regular basis, that could act as a secondary emergency access and drive with some of the relocated plants in that area. But based on the response that we got during the sidewalk, we went back and relocated those transplant materials, which are the spruce closer to the road. We added an overlay of some Japanese andromeda with the deer issue and also a native compacting berry holly along the edge. And now, instead of having this being a managed turf area, it will be planted with a short grass meadow and it will be managed, you know, a few times a year. So it'll be, look more like a field or a meadow and will not be a managed finished lawn.
You don't have to keep the fifteen feet, the fourteen. Actually, it was fourteen and suddenly part of it was fifteen feet, so you don't have to keep that big.
Well, I think the, the opening of the clearing that was done there is proportional to what's there. Everything is growing back in, so over time, that meadow is going to end up becoming naturalized on the edge. We're just, we're going to be taking out the steel edge and the gravel that's in there, so we won't have that hard edge anymore.
But you're putting, you're planting, you're putting in structures for, for, you're not?
No, no.
But I thought it was going to be turf over the structure base.
It's, it's, it's the fiber soil material that we would like to use, which has no structure in it. It's just, it's an amendment to a sandy soil. So there's no plastic grid in there, there's no mats in there, there's no steel staples to hold it in place. This is a relatively new development.
But you don't need that to be fourteen feet wide, do you?
We were just doing it so that in proportion to the opening, which is probably fifty or sixty feet wide, we could, you know, if we wanted to mow a path through there, we would have the space to mow a path and not have the mulch and the woodland vegetation encroach on that. That's going to get a very, very fuzzy edge as, as the native material, because that's going to be seeded and some of that seed will, you know, migrate depending on the sun pattern.
Paul, you could probably narrow that to tall feet. I think we can still make that work.
Paul, just to make it clear, like stuff will grow through the admixture, so.
But you know, trying to make that corridor, what's that?
It's a sandy loam that has an addition of a plastic fiber to it. And just the addition of fiber and then installed at a particular thickness, it allows it to be stable for vehicle travel on there. So we're probably going to consider that for shoulder areas where, you know, trucks typically run off, particularly in the spring when there's damage. It's been used, Yukon has a forty-two acre parking lot made out of this material at one of their sporting venues. So they park a lot of cars, I would imagine, at forty-two acres. I don't think they plow it in the wintertime, maybe it's football, but it's a, it's an interesting development because the grids, although they work, they're difficult to manage and maintain. They move, they peel up, they frost, the staples come up, there's none of that.
So with this, these plastic pieces and type of soil, are there any environmental concerns?
No.
No ramifications.
It's all stable. And you either saw it or seed over the top.
How big are these pieces of plastic?
They're, they're pieces of flat twisted, they're about two inches, inch and a half long. They're translucent and once they're mixed into the soil, you can see them, but when everything is grown on the top, there's, there's no migration from that, that layer up. And in fact, it allows you to manage and maintain, if you, if you wanted to plant another plant in there, you could do that by just taking out that soil and planting a plant, you wouldn't have to go through the mat or the mesh. So it's pretty simple.
So Paul, is that planned, though, during the wintertime?
I don't think we'll.
So I have an issue, if, if there was an emergency and it's, we had example this, a new, so this, this winter, example, my girlfriend's husband had a heart attack and that ambulance couldn't get out because the fire truck had come in. The fire truck, they have a very long driveway, could not back out, not western, but so that would not be plowed?
Well, it certainly could be. It could be plowed because it would hold the weight of any, of any vehicle. It would, it would just have to be managed so that when, when it was plowed, it wouldn't damage the turf that was here. So the blade would have to be lifted up high enough so that you'd always have a little bit of snow there. But if it's just going to be an emergency use, I mean, most years, we don't have this issue.
But even not, if a fire truck was coming up this way, they could never back out to let an ambulance out?
Right.
Could that be plowed somewhat than an ambulance?
Certainly, it's possible, yes.
So I'd like to question what Al did yesterday and also question the need for this whole secondary driveway and certainly without the confirmation of the fire department. Because I think as long as there, as long as the new driveway is wide enough, hopefully twelve feet is wide enough, as long as it has some sort of a turnaround or the fire truck and ambulance have some way of turning around when they get to the end, I don't even see the purpose of this whole thing. And I don't think they're ever going to use it. Most houses only have access, even when they're very long driveways, we have one driveway. So unless they're being required to do it by the fire department, I'd rather see like how suggested that it just be returned to its former state, which is, you know, forest, instead of having a twelve foot path.
A little bit of history. When we first looked at the flexible subdivision plan, the area that we're looking at here was actually a woodland. The neighbors on that private, little private road were quite concerned that the woodland was being taken away and the driveway entrance being put in. There was, there was quite a bit of discussion about it. I think we had three or four, at least three public hearing sessions dealing with the whole driveway entrance and the modification to the woodland and all of it. And one of, one of the discussions that we had was actually an alternative driveway that did exactly what's been proposed now, to come the other way and so that we wouldn't have to have a little driveway off that private road. I mean, we had that whole series of conversations. Now, it's both, you know?
And we don't even know if the fire department would request a second one.
I have not gotten full comment.
And I don't know why they would. I mean, they don't normally request two weeks of access.
Well, this is for three houses.
And I think, as Betsy and I talked about it at the pre-submission meeting, the thought was that if we were able to maintain that in some discreet fashion, perhaps the fire department wouldn't request it. Why are you really, because they have other projects recently?
Well, that's going to all need to be sort of arranged through, I suppose. But, I mean, I noticed that there are, there are turnouts on the driveway.
We did put one turnout in.
Yeah. So there, I don't know how many balls you have to throw at those concerns, but.
It's three houses.
No, it's three now, but, you know, in the future, it could be two.
Yeah, but where's the third house?
It's not on.
Third one's not on.
It's over there.
It's right over here.
But this, this driveway also serves a third house?
Yes, yeah.
It would be. The first part of it.
Yeah, actually. I would just make the observation that it's not going to be a driveway, right? I mean, it's, it's going to look like a landscaped meadow.
That was the original flex plan. This driveway is a house here.
I'm not sure.
When people speak, can they please say who they are because we're trying to, we have a new recording secretary? Thank you.
This is Eric Brooks. I would just, I would just make the observation that, you know, we've gone out of our way to landscape this aggressively. It's going to look like, you know, a forested area with a twelve foot wide meadow that winds through, that's not going to be mowed. And if you're looking at it from the neighbor's house or anywhere else, it's going to look like a forested area. So I guess having that turf there, just in case, I'm not sure what eliminating that, the mental benefit.
Well, here's what we've got. Right now, what we've got is a system that has been signed off. It's got a, it's got a special permit and we don't have to make any changes. This, this is a special permit hearing. So we could say, everything's fine the way it is. We don't see any reason to make a lot of changes in a system that has already been signed off on and approved. The concern that we're having is that this is looking, this look, based on the sidewalk yesterday, this look, I got to tell you, it didn't look like what you just described verbally. It looked pretty, it's going to look pretty odd, you know? It's going to look like a place where a driveway used to be.
I hope not.
Well, I think it is. I mean, you could, you could, you could see what it's going to look like if you, if you just let your mind imagine it. And it's going to look like either a landing strip for a glider or a, or a driveway that used to be, but is no longer. A cart path. But what, what I'm thinking of is trying to restore as much as possible the woodland that we agreed to let you cut down the last time in order to make the driveway entrance off that road, in order to put another driveway in, which we reviewed when we saw this the first time. And so that's, that we need to be convinced that it's, it's at least as, as fine to put the new driveway in as, as, as the existing conditions are. Do you follow me?
I do, I guess.
And I think, I think what you're hearing is we're not, at least from a couple of us, the question is, why would we want to sign off on the, on these changes? And you're, and I have to give you credit for listening to us on the sidewalk, listening to our concerns. I think, I think that area needs, personally, I think that area needs a lot more work. That's what I think. Yeah.
Dave Conway, something engineering for planning board. So, and the interest, you know, my main interest is always to spend as many Wednesday nights at my own home as possible. And the, you know, so when we looked at that, that area where that driveway is now, where would we go away? It's about, really, it's like twenty-eight feet wide, the clearing, right? Because it's the driveway, there's little shoulders and then there's some clear space behind it. So there's some room for a little bit of geometry in there, that it doesn't have to be as straight. That we could soften it that way. And I think the plantings, you know, could be, you know, we'll look, Kim will look at it and soften it that way. My, my secondary point is kind of a larger one than that. I would not, I would hope the board would not say, plant that and then this gets bounced to the fire department who says.
Unplant it.
Unplant it and then we have to come back here on another Wednesday night to unplant it? If the concept of the meadow is okay. I mean, if, you know, you're not okay with like a, like a metal mix grass thing, I mean, that's, it's a moot point. But, I mean, if there's a, if the details can be worked out.
I don't want it to look like a driveway that's been grassed over.
Right. And I think, I think that.
That's what I'm saying.
I would, we would agree with you. We don't want it to look like that either.
That's not what I'm seeing so far. I, I got to tell you, I, listen, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking as an architect and a land planner myself, so I, I can visualize things, what this is going to look like. Right now, it's going to look like a driveway that's been grassed over. If you can change that image, I'm fine with it. That, that's, at least that's how I feel personally, but I, I'm not convinced that it's there yet.
Well, I think Paul can work with Kim in the interim and they can, you know, develop some concepts.
But what I'm also saying is if this whole thing is based on conjecture, why are we basing this on something that we're just guessing about? Why are we getting an opinion from the fire department that we need it or we don't need it? If we need it, we'll make it even better than this, so that it won't look like a road that's been planted over. If we don't need it, then you don't have to, you don't have to spend the expense for that special soil and you spread the trees around more so there's no cart path. That's my, both, both of which are better for you.
Well, I would, I, look, I.
Since we're going to be continuing this, I think we've got, given us some need to work on.
Can I just actually, Ed? I would, I wouldn't go in saying, don't you want this? They're going to say, absolutely. I mean, I would say, how can you make this work in a way that's satisfactory? And if, if there's a way to do that, that's not too disruptive, then maybe we ought to take a close look at that. You know what I'm saying? It's like going into the building inspector and saying, don't, what do you want us to do to comply with, you know, this section of the building, of the building code? Well, you're going to get, you know, you're going to get everything but the kitchen sink. You go in with an interpretation and you say, look, this is what we think is going to work.
It's not that complicated. All you have to do is say, you're proposing a new driveway and removing the old driveway. Here in the story.
Right.
And then if they say, yeah, but.
The difficult part, and I think, you know, as Betsy has mentioned, is that it's a question that's going to be, needs to be answered by folks who weren't at the sidewalk, not at this public meeting, and haven't answered, and haven't been asked the question, and haven't answered it yet.
But I think this is the, I think Steve's approach makes sense to me. You go and you say, this is what we're going to do, with, you know, this is how we're, this is how we're strategizing to make it work.
Bid love.
And that's not really what you do. We're, we're adding the old driveway.
You don't even have to say添 This is what we're going to do for the new driveway. Does it meet your approval? Yeah. End of the story. Then you don't have, you know, you can do whatever you want. If the new driveway meets fire department's approvals for safety and everything else, why do you bother bringing up, you know, like, oh, should we keep this section? How will we pursuing and getting a response for the next meeting?
Yeah. Quite listen to it.
But that really is the only thing. I mean, I'd absolutely, because I mean, you want feedback, congratulations for working your little tails off in such a short time and listening to us, thank you so much. It's great and absolutely get moving that driveway entrance because I almost got killed getting out of there the other day. And love it that you pulled back, you have much more room for planting buffer and everything else in there. So that's wonderful and if we can get this driveway thing straightened out, it would be such an improvement to just have, and not have to deal with all of this, you know, installation, such an expense.
We haven't approached the fire department at all. Usually.
You and I will be sitting down with a fireplace.
Usually, you know, the plans get circulated to the departments if they don't respond.
Yeah, it's a tacit yes.
Absolutely.
So that's usually how we handle this.
Yeah. That's, that's, that sounds reasonable to me.
But, you know, this is not what you show them. You show them a dotted line.
Yeah. I just don't even color that. It's just like.
Circle the over.
Don't dwell on the.
I'm excited by meeting.
But great, you know, nice job. Thank you.
All right, well, just hold on. We've got, before everybody, before the camps, it takes off, I think there's some neighbors here. Does, does anyone have anything that you would like to say or any questions you have about what they presented?
Well, we're at 185.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy Ragavin, it's Eric Polanski. We're at 185 Newt Street. This works for us. Eric and Andrea said they planned some extra trees, which are not on the plans, to just give us some screening. And I think it'll work fine for us, really better. So I'm happy about it.
All right. Does June have anything?
Ramal, 191 Newt. And I wasn't sure of the second driveway as we're looking at the plan.
Could you just put the plan back up again?
That's something that is.
You're talking about the landscape component.
Yeah, the landscape.
Where do you live, sir? Which, which house is yours?
191 would be. The concern was about the trees now that that seems to have been a gross, you know, number of trees being cut down. So that's, it looks like from fifteen is down to what?
Five.
So, which is good. And the driveway that's a little further in than out, so, so right now, as you stand, I don't see a concern, but it's become clearer. You really have another meeting.
Yes, we are.
So it's become clearer at that time. I wasn't too clear on this meadow and the other driveway, but that was way out, away from me.
Yeah, that's on the opposite side.
But at the same time, I'd be interested in knowing about it, too. But at the same time, I'd be interested in knowing about it, too.
Right, we'll talk about that a lot more, I'm sure, in the next session, yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Derek Polanski, also, I have one in mind, I was just curious, I actually asked Derek about whether there was going to be any lighting on the driveway.
No, there's going to be no lighting.
And as a matter of fact, we're going to be taking down some of the lights that you identified, how it was.
Tree now, it's floodlights.
You mentioned there are some additional trees that were not on the plan, probably should become on the plan if they're part of this project, if they're, okay, I mean, it's like, you know, you want to be able to do what's on the plan.
The only other question is, is electric cups going along our stone wall from the, towards the driveway side.
Out on, out on the street here?
No, it's along the stone wall, parallel to your driveway, but closer.
That's not, nothing's changing with that driveway.
Yeah, but that's, some of it seems to be in bad shape, the trees falling and the other things, so while you are doing these things.
The lights that are in, yeah, that's, they're all covered now, the lights in the trees, yeah.
I think he's also talking about, there was some, there's some dead fall in there.
Why isn't all of that, they seem to be in difficult shape.
Good, in that case, we'll continue to win, Betsy.
Well, what's your timing?
We're at your pleasure.
We have a meeting on the 15th, and a meeting on the 6th.
We can be ready for either, whatever works for your agenda, as long as we, you and I get to talk to the fire department in the interim.
So how long, how long will consultancy need?
Oh.
Okay, okay, why don't we try for the 15th?
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, night night. So do I have, is there a motion?
Continue.
Continue, so, my movement. To April 15.
April 15, oh, okay.
All the favor?
Butters don't get noticed, so they need to know. So they take you down?
So 141 Meadowbrook is another, Mark Kaplan, Jan Wiesting, looks like.
To all those entering for the hearing, we need, we have a new recording secretary, so we need everybody who has done a speech to sign in on, sign in. If you're going to make a comment, you need to sign in.